Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. This is February 6, 2023. We're in council chambers and live streamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. We had our annual hospital council and board meeting tonight, so we're running a little bit late. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 21, 2023 because of the President's Day holiday. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan?
Here.
Ms. Knappich?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Mr. Ansel?
Here.
And Ms. Warden?
Here.
Everyone's present, so we do have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time I would ask you to join city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion approving the minutes of the January 16, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Warden to approve is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The January 16, 2023 minutes have been approved. Communications from the mayor. Welcome, Mayor. I see we have a Scrivener's report later on, so, which was attached, but recognize you and good seeing you at the hospital meeting where you're the chairman of the board. It was a fantastic presentation, and if no one doesn't ask, they won't find out, but we have one of the best hospitals not only in the region but nation and worldwide now according to Newsweek's rankings, so that's something to be said for, and we are one of the few city hospitals, if not the only one, in the state of Ohio, so that's even more remarkable. And one more last thing, just for the general public to know, they do not get any tax dollars from the city of Worcester. They stand on their own and operate on the revenues that they bring in, but they are certainly a crown jewel and have thrived under your board chairmanship.
Thank you, President Biden. It's actually the leadership that's in place at the hospital and the members of the board. They've done an outstanding job as far as I'm concerned, and I'm just one of the players of the team up there, so, but it's something that we should be extremely proud of as a community. It's a true asset to our community. I wanted to say thank you to Bill Sheeran, the hospital, the team for the presentation up there at the hospital tonight. As was demonstrated, the hospital is an extraordinary asset for our community and has been a huge player throughout these pandemic years. Our city is blessed to have such a fine healthcare facility and providers. I normally try not to recommend to city council my opinion on how to vote on legislation and let the subject and recommendation of staff sell the issues, but this evening I feel I must comment on ordinance 2023-3. That is on second reading tonight. I believe that ordinance 2023-02 addresses the same issues in a fashion that was approved by a majority, five to one, of the planning commission, and this is the best legislative legislation for the city to enforce our building codes for the safety and welfare of our community. Therefore, it's my recommendation to council members to vote yes on ordinance 2023-02 and vote no on ordinance 2023-03. This year is time to put our comprehensive planning committee in place to review and update Worcester's plan. The last time we did this comprehensive plan was started in 2013 and adopted in 2014. This matches the nationally recognized best practices recommendation that a plan be reviewed and updated every 10 years. At your desk is a list of people from our city who have agreed to be on the committee. It's a list of about 20 people and real good spread throughout the whole community. The first meeting of the group is planned for February 28. OHM advisors are the consultants again for this planning process for our city. Good news I wanted to share with you, Polycom Corporation on February 2 released the 2023 Top Micropolitans Rankings. Worcester is number seven in the nation and number one in the state of Ohio as far as micropolitans out of 543 different micropolitans. Last year Worcester was number 14 nationally, so we increased by half of what we were and very nice recognition for our community and the growth that we've had. Reminder, next council meeting on the 21st. Before that, at 6:30, I am doing the State of the City address for city council in the community, so I wanted to keep that on people's attentions there. So I'm going to turn it over to Joel to introduce one of our new players on our Worcester city management team, and Joel, you can have it.
Yeah, we've got a lot of our managers here, but Mike Fritz, it'll be the first time he's here. Mike has decades of experience in the utilities world. He's our new utilities manager, replaces Nate Coe that had left us for Arizona a while ago, and he's already jumped in and up to his neck in all kinds of projects and things we have going on, and he's here to just introduce you to him and answer any questions on when we get to, I believe it's 2023-14 regarding some filter system improvements that we had talked about last year during budget time and starting to move forward with that project. So we're really happy to have him. Mike's been a great addition to our management team.
Welcome, Mike, and I'm glad you're up to your neck in projects as opposed to some other things that you deal with there as utilities manager.
He's also an engineer, a licensed professional engineer, so.
Well, we won't hold that against you.
And with that, President Biden, we turn it back over to you.
Do you want to make any comments on your Scrivener's note, which I had as part of the comments here there, Mr. Scavelli?
I have nothing to add.
Other than what you had written and was attached to the minutes or to the agenda? Okay, I didn't want to cut you out of anything. Petitions, there are none? If you want two bites at the apple, Mr. Drusil, to speak about the public comment portion, or do you want to wait until we actually have the public hearing on those two?
It's a public hearing.
Okay, but I didn't want to ignore you since you had signed up there. Now, we don't have any committee reports that I'm aware of, but we do have two public hearings. One's the amendment chapter, amending chapter 1107, which I believe is Mr. Sanders or is it Mr.? No, it's Mr. Reynolds, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Reynolds, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are holding a public hearing on a proposed amendment to, flip down here, chapter 1107. And is there anyone present that's prepared to talk in favor of the proposal? Anyone prepared to talk against that proposal?
Which piece of legislation? This is on, this is on?
This is on 2023-02.
Oh, okay.
Again, we've already acted once to expand the allowed uses within R5. We voted the council, the planning commission approved that in the fall, council adopted that. This is yet a further expansion of allowed uses within the R5 zoning district, which again, planning commission has approved, and now we're holding a public hearing on that before it is available for us for action. Going once, going twice, I hear no one willing, ready to speak in for or against this proposal? Guess we'll call this public hearing concluded.
Okay, we will note that the public hearing on amending chapter 1107 via ordinance 2023-02 has had a public hearing. That brings us to ordinance 2023-03. This will be presented, is presented by Mr. Myers, and he will hold the public hearing. I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, President Biden. We will open the public hearing this evening on ordinance number 2023-03 and invite anyone this evening in favor of the ordinance to speak.
Doug Drusil, 225 North Market Street. Thank you for your time tonight. You may have wondered why I didn't speak on the last one, and the answer to that is it doesn't hurt anything, but it doesn't help anything, so if it's passed later tonight, it's fine. It doesn't impact what we're talking about here on this ordinance. Contrary to what the mayor said earlier, it doesn't solve the problem, though. Looking first, if we could, at simply a public policy matter of housing. We all know there's a severe housing shortage in Worcester right now of all, at all levels, but especially at the lower, more affordable cost level. This won't, ordinance won't solve the problem, but it could help. I don't know how you could face the Worcester brushes, the Gojos, the Artiflexes, the College of Worcester, everybody out there who's begging for housing for employees and say, we had a chance to do something, but eh, we decided against it. I don't think that's good public policy. Second, we had a planning commission hearing on this, and the administration spoke against it, as you know, and their only reason for speaking against it was saying that because of the nightmare that they had in the Lawwell mobile home park situation, which I agree was a bad situation, was because the state has exclusive regulatory power, the city couldn't do anything about Lawwell. So I looked into that, found out, well, that's not quite true because the state does have exclusivity on some of the issues there, but the state statute, which I submitted, I assume John relayed my memo to you, it explicitly says the state will deputize a city inspector to enforce the law. It also says the state will deputize private companies to enforce the law. There are four in Wayne County that have already been approved by the state of Ohio to enforce the state law. So it's just, it's just not the case that there's a problem with exclusivity at the state. It's an easily solved problem. John then comes back the other day with a memo saying, well, it turns out that there's also federal exclusivity and that there's a federal law that only they can regulate certain aspects of it. But the answer to that is pretty much the same as the issue on the state law because the federal law only says you can't do anything inconsistent with the federal law. Okay, well, that's always true. The supremacy clause of the United States Constitution says that if Congress acts on something in which they have authority to act, I can't change it, city can't change it, state can't change it, you've got to follow federal law. And if they're saying, well, we don't have any authority to enforce the federal law, all you got to do is pass an ordinance that has the same rules in it, and there's no inconsistency. The problem that was cited, and I think probably correctly by Mr. Scavelli in his memo, is that if you try to do something different, if you try to say, well, we're going to do something different than what federal law permits, well, that's going to be stricken by the courts. Not surprising there. So all you got to do is say, we're going to do something that's the same, that's permitted under the federal law, under the Ohio law, what have you. So it's a pretty easily solved problem. The statute or the ordinance in question is, again, looking more locally, is a practical matter. There are only two properties in Worcester's owned R5, Shellmar Mobile Home Park and Melrose Mobile Home Park. Melrose is pretty full, Shellmar is not. So as a practical matter, the impact of this would just be at Shellmar for all intents and purposes. I would submit to you, where better to have a mobile home park? On the edge of town, it's to the, on the border to the west is farmland, to the south is industrial land, to the north is apartment zoning, and on the other side of the street directly is the barn for lawn mowers for the country club, and then you go a little farther north and there's a, the yard, if you will, of Westview Manor. It's hard to think of a better place if there's going to be some expansion of mobile home housing in town. It's hard to think of a better place than there. And the last point I'd like to make is simply a fairness argument. I did the annexation for this property when I was a lot younger, and Mr. Biden, Dyke and I all had no gray hair, and the property was not originally in the city limits, and they had what's called a package plant where treating the sewer, and it needed something done. And the Shellmar folks had a choice. They could either spend a lot of money to put in a new package plant, or they could spend a lot of money to hook into the city of Worcester's sewer system with a lift station that would pump things uphill to that. And the decision was made to hook into the city of Worcester. At that time, there were drawings on the table to size the lift station there to accommodate the expansion that this ordinance would permit. That was permitted until 2018 when city council changed the law to say even in an R5 zone, you can't do R5 things. I would submit, just as a Worcester resident, that ain't fair to pull the rug out from under somebody who's been a good corporate citizen, run a, they've run a clean operation there. It's nice, it's taken care of, it doesn't have police calls, it doesn't have other problems. It's a nice property, and they were made illegal in essence for all the land that they have there that's still zoned R5. And to say, well, allowing other uses there, those other uses are not practical, they're not realistic, and I would submit that's not fair to this property owner to have pulled the rug out from under them like that. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, any specifics or history or what have you or legal points, but that's all I have to present. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? I'll just add my comment. I asked Mr. Scavelli to draft this because I felt also it was unfair to tell a landowner they could no longer do what they were told originally they could do with the property. I also take some disagreement with the memo put out by the city that said that this recommendation of the planning commission failed. The vote was three to three. In most organizations, parliamentary procedure, if it's a three to three vote, it's no recommendation, not failed. So the three to three is a tie, and that is a no recommendation either way. I did take it upon myself to reach out to the planning commission member who was not at the meeting. He winters in Arizona, bless his heart, Chuck Armbruster, and I spoke with him. Asked him first, was he familiar with the situation in the R5? He was, I believe, here when they passed the R4 back in the fall of last year to try to correct the problem. He was very familiar. He'd actually read the package for the meeting that he wasn't able to attend where the vote was three to three. I asked if what he would have voted, if he would mind sharing his opinion, and he said he would have voted in favor of allowing R5 in an R5 district because he didn't feel it was fair to tell that property owner, they could not do that. Therefore, the recommendation would have been four to three, and it would have been a recommended ordinance. Anyone here this evening that else would like to speak or speak against this ordinance? You want to speak against it? If not, we've already finished in favor. Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak against?
Right here.
Against?
Yes. So hopefully everyone got a chance to read the memo. Do you want me to stand there?
Yes, for the video.
If you're going to speak, you got to follow the rules, Mr. Scavelli.
Thank you very much.
And you're asking us to follow the rules.
I hope everybody got a chance to look at the memo that we sent. We thought it was pretty important to get that out there because there seems to be a confusion as to what we're talking about when we talk about preemption. The memo that was submitted by Mr. Drusil talks about state preemption. Unfortunately, state preemption is only a very small part of the overall preemption picture when we're talking about manufactured housing. The real problem is federal preemption. So there is, there are the HUD standards. The HUD standards are what basically dictate safety for manufactured housing. What that leaves us is that, yes, the city could adopt the HUD standards, but there's no enforcement armed to the HUD standards. Because of that, how do you enforce property maintenance at this point? And that's really the issue that we had. Our property maintenance code is inconsistent with the HUD standards because it's built toward a different type of uniform code. It does, it just does not work, right? And there are cases that specifically say that, they were cited in the memo. Also, there have been states who have chosen to adopt the HUD standards, and then from there they've tried to enforce them. Some of their enforcement measures have been knocked down. That was the Minnesota case that I cited. Honestly, there's not a lot of cases on this issue. I think that could be for a lot of reasons. I think a lot of times the people who, who are subject to the enforcement may not have the means to fight it. There may be all sorts of reasons why that's not the case, but there's very little case law I had to look. There's definitely nothing really in Ohio. What we're left with is a very uncertain regulatory picture. If we were to try to come up with an enforcement measure that would meet the HUD standards, it may not survive a challenge. It would be very difficult to come up with something that would work within the standards, and that's what we've been saying the whole time. What we've been saying is we cannot enforce our property maintenance code. That is, there's no question about that. I don't think you've even heard Mr. Drusil argue that we can do that. We would have to come up with a new property maintenance code that fit the HUD standards, and we're not sure when a court would tell us, nope, you've gone too far, now you're regulating safety beyond what the HUD standards allow. Even if we adopt the HUD standards themselves, that's still happened within the Minnesota case. So what we're proposing and what we're in favor of, as you heard the mayor say, was the other piece of legislation in front of you tonight. That allows for modular homes to be built in a similar size and similar density to what a manufactured home would be. This should address the, the housing differences and the housing problems that we're facing within the city of Worcester currently. From what I'm able to tell from just asking, this is not me as an expert in any way, but just calling around and asking, the price difference between a new modular home and a new manufactured home is about $20,000 to $25,000, which sounds like a lot, but overall they hold their value more. They're also real property when they're put onto the property, so it's like owning a house versus basically owning a fancy camper. In the long run, this is something that is more beneficial for the people who buy these houses, it's more beneficial for the citizens of Worcester, and it's overall a better choice for council tonight. If there's any questions, anyone has, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you. Yes.
I know a lot of this comes down to maintenance, but as Mr. Drusil pointed out, we have two other mobile home parks in our community, or two, not two other, one and then, and then Melrose. And other than Lawwell, I don't think we have a problem, and maintenance was not the only issue with Lawwell, believe me. That was probably, it was top three, but there were two that were high ahead of that. And, and that was the result of the city not doing what they should have been doing, and it wasn't so much the maintenance. So I, to me, I guess my question to you is, if we're not having any problems with that facility now, if we're not having any problems with Melrose, then why is there this anticipation that there would be so many more problems and therefore more need for enforcement should Shellmar be permitted to basically be what it is?
Thank you very much for your question. Basically, what I would say to that is, right now, if the owners stay the same, we've heard Mr. Drusil, what great owners they are, we've heard from the chamber, what great owners they are, we agree with that. We think they're great owners, too, but we don't know who the new owners are going to be. We also know that part of what they're talking about is they want to sell the property. So whether or not this, both Shellmar and any other, and the other manufactured home park, the reason they're good now is because of good ownership. When it's sold, we don't know what's going to happen, and without that enforcement regulatory structure that I'm talking about, we're pretty much left at the mercy of whoever the owner is and what they choose to do. A lot of manufactured home parks basically rely on what the owners do and with their own restrictive covenants and the deeds and what they can enforce upon their own owners and their own renters. In this case, the city of Worcester doesn't really think that that, or the city of Worcester administration anyway, does not think that's really the best thing for the city, given what's happened in the past.
Having been here at the time where there was the Lawwell fiasco, I don't know that I would put these two things in the same category, but I will say that there is a desperate need for housing, that's affordable housing in this community. I guess if I think we can do it on a limited basis, you said with $20,000 difference between a manufactured home and a camper on wheels, I guess is how you put it. $20,000 is a lot of money to people who are just getting started, people who are living paycheck to paycheck, you know, what I would consider to be the working poor.
Sure.
That may make the difference between throwing money away in rent and being able to build some equity. And when the whole Lawwell thing happened, we didn't have this housing shortage at that time. It just wasn't an issue, but I think maybe there's a consideration that times have changed a little bit, and I absolutely appreciate and understand the city's concern with what happens with the next owner. But I think that also comes down to, quite frankly, business.
Sure.
If they want to be able to have people, and good people, they'll keep it clean, they'll keep it nice, and, and the people that aren't that, and especially with the housing shortage now, you know, they'll, they'll remove them.
Well, one of the worries with manufactured home parks in particular, and like I said, both owners that have come up tonight, we think do a wonderful job. One of the major worries is that people, so they move their manufactured home onto the lot. A lot of times they're paying rent on those lots, but they own the manufactured home. Manufactured homes are supposed to be able to be moved. Unfortunately, after a period of time, most of the time they can't be moved anymore, and so what you have are people that either they have to lose whatever equity they have in that rented home, or they have to continue to pay rent to somebody. And in this case, as long as the owner is great, like the, like the ones we're talking about tonight, that's not a problem because they keep it updated, they keep it clean, they keep it nice. But if you're tied into, and especially if you have money problems, like you're saying, you're tied into a place where you don't own the land your house is on, you can't move your house, well, that's a problem. And not only that, when we're talking $25,000, I know $25,000 sounds like a lot of money, but when you're talking about financing a home, $25,000 isn't that much different on your payment between one or the other. And that's, that's really what we're talking about. And the long term, the modular homes hold their value so much more that the people who purchase them are going to be in a much better position when they go to sell them in 10, 15, 20 years. They'll actually get something back for their money. So that's where we're talking about actually almost a consumer protection part of it, which isn't really even the city's concern. The city's concern at this time is really whether or not we can regulate. The city's concern at this time is really whether or not we can regulate once these houses are there. But also, we think it's better for the citizens to have an investment that they can actually get their money back for, which is difficult to do with a manufactured home.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Don't, don't go away.
Sure.
You know, you talk about something that might happen. I guess the issue I have, at least from my legal perspective, is what did happen, and I've not, I, I, we've talked about it tangentially, but the Fifth Amendment aspect of taking, having changed the zoning, has effectively disallowed a portion of the property that was originally zoned in a particular way, no longer being able to be used. And I haven't really heard the administration's position on that.
Sure.
Because that seems to be a specter hanging out, out there. When you say of the unknowns of that, that certainly is an unknown if we proceed as we, as you are suggesting.
I'm sure Mr. Drushul will disagree with me, but I, I became convinced, so that when this issue first came to me, the, the first thing I thought was whether there was a takings issue. I believed at the time that there definitely could have been, assuming that there's nothing else that would stop that lawsuit. In this particular case, we basically had a property that essentially couldn't be used. And the reason it couldn't be used is because the only thing that could stay there would be R5 uses, which is manufactured homes, and they weren't allowed to build anything anymore. The answer that the administration had, which this city council did pass, was to allow them to basically build apartment buildings there. It's the perfect place for apartment buildings. There's apartment buildings really close. The owners can do that. They can develop it as apartment buildings. Once that happened, takings was, in my mind, in my legal opinion, off the table. Doesn't mean they can't file the lawsuit. Anybody can file a lawsuit. However, that lawsuit, in my opinion, will not be successful. And the reason I don't think it's gonna be successful is because what we look at when we look at takings law is, is there a viable use? It doesn't have to be the best use or the, or the preferred use of the owner. It has to be, is there an economically viable use for that property? And there is. And there's no regulation that's stopping any economically viable use at this time. That'll be even more so tonight, whichever one of these pass. But if the city, the one that the city's hoping passes to allow modular home use, that's just gonna make this property more marketable and more economically viable. And would make a takings case even less likely. But I think the takings case was no longer an issue as soon as this city council allowed for apartments to be built there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Scavelli?
Not, not a question, I just want to point out, and it's terrible when you get three or four lawyers in a room.
That's all right.
They're gonna argue with each other. Don't you hate that? We love it. Yeah, five of us here. But I, I guess, you know, you talk about the takings and there is another viable use, but, you know, we're talking, if, if you're talking apartments, we're not talking homeownership here. We're not talking about something that can translate into something people can have in their pockets in the future.
That's true.
And, and, you know, one of the things that, that when we ran office, we committed, we're gonna try and find as much and do as much as we can for the housing situation here in Worcester. And I'll be honest, I've gotten several emails from people who have said to me, do you think that housing plans up on the hill, that's gonna be affordable by regular Worcester people? And I said, I think they will be sold, and I think they will be sold. But they'll be much more than a manufactured home or a mobile home would be. And so you have a distinct group of people where, you know, both parents are working, they've got kids, they want to be able to have that American dream too. And I just want to make sure that, that we can make that available to them so they stay here. And then five years from now, they sell that to somebody else who's new and young, and, and then they move on to my old house. You know, they can move on up. But, you know, that's, that's the, that's the plan that we should be looking at. How do we keep growing this community?
Well, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, is, I just, I do have a question though for Mr. Drushul.
That's absolutely fine, please.
And this is a question that I've asked you privately, and I guess I'll ask you again publicly. So, you know, you've made several arguments, did a nice job of those. There's a fairness argument that you've raised, and you've also raised a public policy argument. And I'd like to, that's the one I'm struggling with. Because you're arguing that it'd be good public policy, because of housing and the things that have been raised, to allow Shellmar to expand the number of mobile homes on their site. And I guess my question for you is, if it's good public policy to allow the, a significant expansion of Shellmar Mobile Home Park, wouldn't it also be good public policy to allow more mobile home parks in Worcester? Or in their, not necessarily downtown Worcester, but in appropriate spots?
Well, the, the short answer to that is, you control that. No mobile home is gonna go anywhere unless it's zoned R5. And nothing's gonna be changed to an R5 zone unless this council approves that. So I think, would I say there's some reasonable upper limit on what percentage of your housing stock should be mobile homes? I suppose. I don't think we're anywhere close to it. But it's, it can't happen unless four out of the seven of you or more say you want that to happen. So that, I mean, that's a...
Well, and to clarify, the ordinance in question, 2023-03 maintains the 2018 zoning code where we put a moratorium and there will be no additional R5s within the city limits. That was decided in 2018. That is maintained in this ordinance. So the question is, you know, from a hypothetical situation, if the policy is this is good, wouldn't it be good to have more? You know, I used to like beer, but having more wasn't necessarily good. So, yeah, it's a great hypothetical, but the ordinance strictly prohibits any further R5 use.
And I, I acknowledge that, and I apologize if I muddied the waters a little bit.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to clarify that it's still in there that we're not having any more R5s.
Well, that, it's a fair question. My dad used to say his father, my grandfather, wasn't with beer, but he'd said, if something of, something is good, then more of it's better. He said, so if the doctor prescribed two pills to take, he would take four, just to be safe. But that, you know, that literally can't happen here, anywhere else in town, unless there's a substantial change to the law that nobody here tonight is advocating.
Well, and the example I would give, and I apologize for...
No, that's okay.
The example I would give, and I'm not, I don't think there's any nefarious plan here, but I believe the tract just to the north of Shellmar is for sale. It's not zoned R5. It's zoned C something, I think.
The next north, immediately to the north is R4.
I think to the north is R4, to the south is zoned industrial.
Yeah.
But I guess my question is, you know, when the same public policy argument come in at that time and say, look, R4 isn't feasible here, but we can build more mobile home pads.
Here's the public policy argument I would make, Bob, with regard to that piece of land right there. As you mentioned, it's for sale. There's, I think there's a for sale sign up on it right now. And nobody's building apartments there. It isn't happening. And as was pointed out earlier, if that did happen, nobody's owning that except the developer. The individual who's moving in there is not going to be an owner. And you could, if, if we made other changes to the code, I think you could, if it was a manufactured housing or the, if the modular housing that was stick-built was put in, in an R5 area. I think John's underestimating the cost differential there by quite a bit from people I've talked to, but I'm not an expert on that, so I don't want to say that with any certainty. But you'd have to have a pretty substantial cost or a code change for that to allow the occupant of that property to be an owner. Because as he said, it's real estate. If you are hooking that to the dirt, as you well know, and now you, you can't have a separate piece of real estate unless you have a code that permits that, kind of in the nature of a cluster home or a condominium-type ownership. So, and that, even just setting that up is expensive. And the sewer and water connections would be different, the whole nine yards. It's a lot more expensive to do it that way, whether it's 25,000 or 50,000 or whatever it is, it's a bigger monthly nut for the person who's trying to get started in life and wants a nice place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, like Mr. Drushul was pointing out, those are three separate business models. A mobile, a mobile home park is, is a rental, rent a piece of pad for your mobile home that you own. The one that we're looking at passing this evening, and I am in favor, by the way, of 20-2302 as well, which is a modular home, that's a very different business model because once it's affixed to the property, you can't move it. It becomes a part of that property. The person who's doing that development has to do something like a 99-year lease revolving, like they do up at Lakeside, where the houses are built and they're permanently there. So you, you don't own the land that your, your unit's on in that case either. And the utility pickup would be an additional approximately $7,000. It's difficult to finance that as well. So that's just a cost that they would incur. The last point I have is that we currently do have 700 mobile home parks, or, excuse me, mobile homes in the city of Worcester that fall under the current ordinances by the state. And this, allowing this person to do what they were told they could do with their property 30 years ago, it doesn't really affect that in any way. It doesn't fix the problem that the city references because we already have 700 of those in that city, so. Thank you. Yes, Bob?
I just wanted to add one thing. And I don't know if my recollection is different from other people's who were on council and voted on this in 2018, but when we passed that legislation regarding no new trailer parks essentially, I considered Shellmar, that whole area already, the trailer park was just not completely developed. And so that's, and, and that was the intended use. So that's kind of what, where I'm at as well. It's not like, okay, we're gonna take this whole new, brand new piece of property that wasn't ever meant for this type of development, as opposed to, we're going to let them do what they had, what they were able to do in the beginning. And I look at this more as, as an extension as opposed to a new trailer park.
I agree. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to just make a few comments and observation based on the dialogue this evening and the dialogue that we've had the last several months. We all recognize the number one challenge in our city today is viable employees that corresponds to affordable housing. So it's number one and number two. I don't know what's the priority, but they're both married. One exacerbates the other. We can't have employees unless they commute without affordable housing. I'm with Ms. Knappik that a $300,000 home, a starter home, and the developments that were, you know, embarked upon is really not that affordable for the average worker. So we have these priorities and as elected representatives and city administrators, to not be able to facilitate some positive element to support those two challenges, I think, is alarming. Now, we digress to the 2018 scenario, and to compare Shellmar or Melrose trailer parks with the disaster of the Larwell trailer park is not a fair comparison at all. Why? Because one was managed by a slumlord and was not held accountable. We understand the zoning violations, but no one's mentioning the $300,000 of water and sewage that had gone unpaid, that we did not actly as quickly and as aggressively as we could have. So huge monetary impact, and that's in essence how that was resolved. By calling that debt, that outstanding, enforcing the slumlord into foreclosure, idling that park, we were able to achieve an effective goal to eliminate our downtown community with a trash, slumlord-managed operation. So we put those, and I do resonate Ms. Knappik's summation in memory. It was a two-fold initiative. One was a very reactive portion, and that is to prohibit the well-established and run one remaining park in escrow or in a hold pattern. But more importantly, mandating in the future no other major expansions would be able to occur without zoning and planning commission affirmation. So we're talking worst-case scenario, a new owner comes in, they're not a viable owner, no comparison to the Shellmar, or not, the Larwell park, because we're talking now an investor coming in and investing millions of dollars in land and existing infrastructure and lift station upgrades that were, was built to handle the capacity of full allocation at that trailer park at someday in the future, 35 years ago. That's good planning. And the slumlord's not going to come in, again, conjecture, and the city's conjecturing their argument based on a bad operator coming in, to be able to make that investment. Where a slumlord could come in and buy the Shellmar park, or Larwell park at pennies on the dollar and generate cash with no accountability for numerous years in terms of delinquent payment. It's apples to oranges in this scenario. Number one priority, labor, housing, housing, labor. Understanding the moratorium in 2018 and the differences, we're using lack of zoning enforcement. It's a viable argument, but there are many other elements that counter that argument. And in any good debate, there's always premise, premises for the argument in the debate. And in this particular situation, the factors far outweigh with the potential litigation in terms of not being able to use the property, what is, what it was intended for, a viable operator that will require a significant investment for another operator. Maybe we find ourselves with a new owner operator that's bringing in pristine new homes to buy, sell, finance at their park. Let's talk the upside. I've known a lot of people in my life and career that have lived in trailers. I don't call them campers because some of the trailers today are pretty darn nice, that hold their value. Sure, they depreciate or devalue over a period of time. And are they as, made as well as a new home? I think today they're made pretty darn well for a 50-year useful life. So it does have some equity value, some residual value, it's lower cost. And I will say this, and I will close. I'm a market-driven decision-maker, and I'm not debating whether it's a 25,000, a 35, or a $40,000 delta between a manufactured home and a modular home. Let the consumer make that decision. We're now having R4 opportunities. If they want to spend that additional money and they do the cash flow analysis and it makes economic sense, why are we trying to control consumer-driven decisions as city council? Now, I do believe that a moratorium through the zoning commission for any other proposed, maybe the new owner will come in and it'll be a pristine park. And it's going to be a beautiful addition to our community that provides a lower-cost price point for a new consumer. Let it be a consumer-driven decision and not a governmental decision in terms of hamstringing an investor... that provides a lower-cost price point for a new consumer. Let it be a consumer-driven decision and not a governmental decision in terms of hamstringing an investor who made that vision and investment 40 years ago, has been a good steward of that property in an ideal location on our, in our city's corridor, on the exterior perimeter, in an existing area of subsidized rentals, condos, and apartments. So arguments understood, but I will have to say after a very thorough and deliberate analysis where my vote is going this evening, and one other final closing comment. Everyone that knows me as a council representative have noted that I always support our commission's recommendation, or I have. I mean, it's just not something I do. I value their input and their contribution to the commission and understanding that there was one individual absent at the last voting session, and it was a tie, not a non-recommendation or a veto. And I compliment Mr. Myers on his contacting the one absent planning commission representative and affirming his yea vote on overturning the existing moratorium on that existing parcel. So that makes it in my mind four to three, and I'm going to have to side and vote in favor of the alleged planning commission's recommendation as well as supporting ordinance 2023-02. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I think at this point we'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2023-03.
All right, we will consider ordinance 2023, day zero three.
I think Mr. Montgomery had something to add.
I'm not, I'm not holding the hearing, so.
I think Mr. Montgomery had something to add.
Was there something further from the administration?
If, if it's okay, yeah.
Well, absolutely, sure.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify a few things. And then there was a couple other things that we said regarding preemption and stuff. I don't know that it'll change anything, but we just felt it was probably important to at least share some additional information. I know fairness was brought up, and that's something that was obviously very, something we thought about a lot and were very sensitive to, and that's, that's why we added a couple more options so that there would be a viable economic use of that property. I would just say zoning does change all the time, you know, from what, when somebody bought it to later. So that does happen all the time, that's a normal course.
Mr. Montgomery, you said that at the planning commission, and you misled them then in order to get a 3-3 tie. That is not true, we have a moratorium, you can't be additional, there can't be an additional zone five. You told them that if we allowed this, there could be additional zone five. That's not true, not, not true.
Somebody corrected me right after that, so.
The other thing you can't do, well, so don't, don't mislead them again, okay? The other thing that you didn't do when you did it in 2018 is you could have rezoned that property, zone four, instead of, instead of the moratorium, and then you'd have been required to notify the property owner that you didn't, and you didn't do that, so.
So I, I don't remember exactly everything that happened in 2018.
Please continue, we're trying to move along.
So anyway, my only point was, regardless of this particular, this particular parcel, zoning changes all the time, so people invest and then it gets changed. I'm just, want to clarify that, that does change all the time. As far as policy goes, and council's been very instrumental in this with some of the policies that you have passed, the TIF was a very big one, zoning the property north of Meltown R4, and those kind of things. And we're still in communication with potential development. So there's, there's the full spectrum of housing, is, we're actively talking to people, if not daily, weekly, on multiple housing. The one on Melrose that's got, that is a combination of small, single-family and some multifamily that was already approved when in development, that one.
But on rentals.
Is still moving forward, 141 units, so that, that covers, you know, some of the, the different price point, a little bit lower. There was an apartment complex that was just approved by the planning commission on Cleveland Road. So these things are happening, and we're facilitating those as much as we can. The policies that, that council passed, I think, have facilitated that and have helped. We continue to have those. So not just the, you know, the single-family that's going in on, on Oak Hill Road right now, but all the way from condos to, to some apartments are also being done. So that's actively being done, so we're actively trying to address those as much as we can. The market's going to dictate a lot of that, as Mr. Ansel said. The only other thing I would say is, you know, one of the issues, did we hold off shutting water and sewer off? We did, for the sake of the residents that were there on Larwell. But I believe part of the reason we got to that point is because we couldn't get in there to do some of the other things, and it sort of compounded on top of each other. Because of property maintenance and zoning things, we weren't, we just weren't allowed. We were, we were calling, I remember sitting in, in, in the conference room upstairs, the mayor with Tim Monet, and we were talking to the people of the state, what can we do? And we were told we couldn't do anything. So it, it just sort of compounded. As things kept getting worse, and then we couldn't get in there to really see what was going on with, you know, some of the water situation, so it, I just, it just sort of compounded.
I, 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 we need to interrupt, I'm sorry, but we could have brought suit, we could have foreclosed.
We could have, we could have earlier.
And there are so many resources, as we found out, when we did foreclose, when the city did foreclose, there wasn't a person who went without housing, no one, because we have that kind of community where they found housing for every single person, we could have done that earlier. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Potentially, yeah, yeah. I guess one other, one other clarification, at the planning commission meeting, there was a third option that was proposed at the end, which was allow R5 expansion and the, the city's proposal, which was the modular, to that. That one was voted down. When that came, that was, that was added during the meeting, that one was voted down. So I just want, there was a third option there, and I think it was in Vince's memo that he sent to you guys.
Just to clarify, though, Dr. Weaver from the college stated that he had to vote no because he didn't understand Kyle Adams' request for amendment. I talked to him afterwards, actually, it wasn't right after the meeting, it was the following week, and I explained to him what the intention was, and he said, oh, I might have considered that. So it was a misunderstanding, a lack of clarification, the reason that failed.
And I don't remember.
Just so you know, we don't not do our homework up here.
And I don't remember the vote number there, I just wanted to clarify that because it wasn't mentioned yet up here. I guess the last option I would say is, we are embarking on our comprehensive plan process. And one option would be to use that process to gain some feedback from the community, because that's what that process will be, to see what, you know, what they might think in regards to expanding R5 or not, just, just to throw that out as an option, because I'm sure we'll be talking about a lot of those things. Zoning will be one of those, housing will be one of those during the comp plan process. The drawback is it'll be a while before we work through all that, but I just wanted to throw that out, so. Mr. Myers, I believe Mr. Marion would like to address you as well.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I was a council, I would be remiss to point out that if O2 is, O2 is?
First one.
O3, if O3 is adopted, that is addressing, the standards that are in that amendment are addressing the current situation as it sits. There are no standards in the code for any new construction or any new, or new parcels, because when the 2018 amendment took place, it removed all that from the code because there was an assumption that there would be no new manufactured homes being installed. So if that is going to take place, we need to at least, and piggybacking what Mr. Montgomery said, look at, at, as part of the comprehensive plan and put those regulations back in before a site plan or proposal is presented, and I have no standards to guide how that is to be reviewed.
You just read the last ones?
Well, they were removed.
Well, I know, but you don't still have them, and they couldn't reinstate it?
There are, yeah, the old codes are there.
Okay, that's good.
An amendment would have to be introduced to address those.
Well, thank you for reminding us, we need to put that in place.
And when I'm looking at, looking at landscaping, looking at buffering, we're looking at open space requirements, sidewalks, all that were, were part of the original section.
So we would need to put that back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We would need to do further legislation.
And if I could ask a question then about that, isn't that what was stated earlier, that there's state and federal regulations already in place? You're mentioning some of the HUD requirements. That's all with regard to inspection, but I would assume that there's already some language in place that would help to facilitate putting all of that back into the code.
Yeah, I would think that the HUD standards Mr. Monet can address is probably better than I can, would be on the structure itself, on the actual manufactured home, on the park and the land. That would still be subject to any regulations that we put in in terms of buffering and landscaping and.
We would just simply reinstate what was there prior to 2018.
You could reinstate or tweak it.
Yeah.
Right, or whatever's added to the cluster home section from here.
All right, thank you. Yes. This was going to be a short meeting.
It would be worthwhile, just to clarify this, federal preemption, and all due respect to the two attorneys that already explained this, let a building inspector attempt. But the HUD standard is a federal standard on construction, how manufactured homes are built. While it is true, we could have a parallel standard that mimics that, we certainly would never want to try to come up with a standard on how you build manufactured homes. This is a federal government duty, and they basically said we're, we're the ones responsible for that. And as how they are put on a site, how the, how they are tied to a foundation, the federal government has turned that over to the states. And so, yes, we do have state inspection agencies that do that, and that's all they're looking at essentially, is how these things are tied to the ground. Now, because we've never really had many new ones sited in Worcester, we've never had a certified inspector do that. There really was no point in doing that because, as you mentioned, all these sites are already developed over there at Shellmar, and also in the scattered sites that are around Worcester. We don't have any new foundations going in, so there really was no point in getting certified. There's no, there is no authority that we have to do inspections beyond that. So for example, when you look at Larwell, I had no legal authority to condemn a manufactured home. I can't do that. I can condemn a structure, and, but I can't condemn a manufactured home. And in all due respect to Ms. Knappick, you are correct, we could have taken legal action. In fact, we did, a trustee was appointed, but the basis of that trustee being appointed was the fact that it had gotten so bad. I don't know that you could have run in and done that right away, but we were very limited in, in enforcing, we have no standards to enforce in a manufactured home park. And so, while you're, you, you know, you may be correct, this may go in and never be a problem, and I hope that's the case if it gets approved. But if it's not the case, we will be limited in what we can do.
So I'm, I'm confused that you were saying that the feds have authority over how it's, it's basically put on the land.
No, no.
Do they also, or the state? We don't. But my question is, who has authority over maintenance?
That's, that's.
That, that's the crux of the matter.
Does, are there federal regulations as to how they're maintained?
There are none.
Are there state regulations?
There are none.
Well, if we're not acting contrary to law on a federal or state basis, why can't we impose our regulations?
I can defer that.
If I may jump in, that was the whole point of my memo. So if you read it, that's, you, you got right to the point of what I was trying to express, which is that we have the HUD standards to talk about construction. Our property maintenance code is meant to go with the House Building Code, which is, they're meant to work together, okay? But that's only for site-built homes, it doesn't apply to manufactured home.
I understand that, I guess my question is, does anybody right now have any legal authority to, to manage the maintenance of these facilities?
Okay, so you're very limited in what you could do. So here's, that's what I was trying to explain. You have a, you have the HUD standards. The HUD standards say how a manufactured home is to be built. But you have to understand, it's built like a car, okay? So we generally don't have the same type of situation where you, it sits on a chassis, it's, it's just one unit, right? So when there's a car, you have certain things you have that you have to maintain, but it doesn't stand up the same way as a house, it's not meant to be there for as long. So they do not have an enforcement property maintenance standard built in. Some states have tried to make one, okay? And so the first thing that they do is they adopt a, the HUD standards as their manufactured home building code. And then they, and then, well, you would, if you were going to, because that's the only thing you can do. You're not allowed to come up with your own building code for manufactured homes. So the first step is that you.
I understand the building code benefit, I, I get that.
So then they, they try to come up with a, they try to come up with a property maintenance code for manufactured homes. But you have to understand, the reason it gets difficult is the, the federal code specifically says that you can't do anything that's going to make stricter safety standards on a manufactured home than what the HUD standards say. So that's where the argument comes in. So in the Minnesota case that I cited, they said, okay, well, your property maintenance standards are taking a notch higher than what the federal standards are. So it got knocked down. They said that they, the only thing they could do was, was take care of, like, maintenance outside on the exterior of the home and ancillary buildings. And so that's all they allowed them to do, nothing with the building itself. So you could try to craft something. And that's why I tried to say, I think it's a legal, it's a legislative and a enforcement minefield. You could try to craft something that fits within those. It's definitely, it's probably possible. But you're, you're opening yourself up for challenges, and they may not be enforceable. We could find ourselves in a problem where there is a problem in the future where we actually can't enforce things, these things, and a court strikes it down. And that's really the, the crux of our entire argument.
I, I understand that. I think probably Mr. Durschel has some really good associates who could use that as a good research project, come up with some pretty good proposed legislation.
I believe.
He already missed the federal preemption.
I, I believe we're, we've kind of moved beyond our reasonable amount of time for the hearing, but Mr. Kevin, would you please?
I just had one quick comment. I do remember there was a time I was getting calls from neighbors on Larwell Street as far as not being able to do anything with the trailers being manufact, with manufactured homes not being able to do any maintenance or inspections. Didn't a fellow have a six-foot alligator in his living room and a swimming pool? And people were calling me, telling me, hey, you gotta do something. And I was like, we don't have the authority. Isn't that, isn't that what happened?
We may have significantly digressed here, so I believe the council has enough information, and it was presented, I think, on all sides. So I'm going to end the public hearing on ordinance 2023-03 and thank everybody for their enthusiastic participation.
Well, for the second time, we will have considered ordinance 2023, day zero three, as having its public hearing.
Beat it with a stick.
That brings us to the first item under Unfinished Business, ordinance number 2023, day zero two. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds, and it's on its second reading. Before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Apollo, would you please call, or please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the planning commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
Mr. Reynolds, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've talked about this several times before, we just had our public hearing, which drew no comments. It is a tweaking of the R5 district to allow one additional use. I would make motion to suspend the rules and put this on third and final.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miners. Would you please call the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as Mr. Durschel indicated, this really doesn't affect, doesn't move the needle much one way or the other with regards to the issue of mobile home parks in, in R5. Doesn't really have a bearing on the next piece of legislation. And I would move the adoption of, just going to scroll down here, ordinance number 2023-02.
All right, motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? I better jump in. Sing nun, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023, day zero two passes. Brings us to the second reading of ordinance number 2023, day zero three. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers. Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Yep. Ordinance number 2023-03, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 1107 Zoning Districts of the Worcester Codified Ordinances to Allow Expanded Manufactured Home Development Within the R5 Zoning District.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I think we've had extensive discussion on this, and I'm just gonna take about 30 minutes to review all the points that were already made. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules this evening in ordinance number 2023-03.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Apollo, on the motion to suspend the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Knappick?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. I look to you again there, Mr. Myers.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? I think this was quite vetted this evening and in prior meetings. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
No.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
No.
And Knappick?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023 day zero three passes, five to two. Brings us to new business. We'll have a first reading of ordinance number 2023 day zero six. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2023-06, An Ordinance Amending the Annual Appropriation Ordinance.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the fortunate situation that we get to make a adjustment to our appropriation ordinance from the standpoint that with the One Ohio opioid settlement fund, there have been additional funds that are now part of that settlement due to additional drug companies that have joined, have joined the settlement. And so, for us, it allows us to take in an additional $31,000 towards that. And while the administration is not asking for suspension of the rules, I'm not sure that there's any reason not to just move this along. So, with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, floor is yours again.
Uh, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Well, what's not to like about additional money?
Part of the thing, after I prepared that memo, eight days later, I got notice that there are five additional entities assigned. One, which was Wal-Mart, Walgreen.
Oh, yes, it is.
So, in the future, I would anticipate us receiving more.
Uh huh, uh huh.
I'll just try to hopefully look into asking how I'll put it, but if possible, we'll leave a bag.
All right, well, I guess that's good news, but it's sad news that we've had to come to this based on the opioid crisis. Seeing nothing further from council, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2023 day zero six passes. Brings us to resolution number 2023 days 12. It'll be presented by Mr. Kevin. It's budgeted, will not require suspension of the rules. Before I get to you, Mr. Kevin, Mr. Apollo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-12, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Administration to Purchase Four Vehicles for Use Within the Police Department.
Mr. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did speak with Chief Fisher as far as the purchase of four new police vehicles for our department. There is some issues that haven't come up in the past as far as availability being one, model year change being another, some, several different things happening. I was hopeful he would be here to be able to speak to it, but I do see Assistant Chief Rotolo, and I really wouldn't want to steal his thunder. I was hopeful he might be able to enlighten us a little further on the purchase. We do want to purchase them. I think what he asked is, what we're looking for is authorization to buy them. We just don't quite know yet which ones we're going to buy. He needs to do a little more investigation to find, to get the best deal for us and the best fit. But the timing is unknown, and he had said that if something like that were to happen, he would make us aware of his purchase, of course, but it would be past tense. If you would speak to that, I'd really appreciate it.
Absolutely, Mr. President, members of council. As far as the vehicles, it's very difficult for us to get any type of police cruiser right now. Any make or model that we look at, it's extremely difficult. There's essentially an order bank that goes out, and that order bank closes almost as fast as it opens up, because we're in the same boat as every other police department in the state of Ohio. They're trying to get these cars. And Chief Fisher's concern is, is when that order bank opens up and he's able to get some very specific information, that order bank's gonna close before we're gonna be able to get it in front of you guys. So, we just want to have the ability to, once we, that order bank opens up, we can do our due diligence and get the best deal for our department and the city, and move forward based on your guys' approval. So, does that answer your question?
That does seem to be a reasonable and prudent request to me, yes.
Thank you all. Any other questions?
It would still be state bid, so it's still, still under the same bid price.
If I could ask one question, are, how are, so we're gonna be replacing four vehicles ultimately. Are those four vehicles able to sustain a weight like this? Are they in good enough condition that that won't be an issue?
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, yes. When we put this forward, we take that into consideration. So, yes, they need to be replaced, but they're not rusting out through the bottom. They're still safe, but it's time for them to be replaced.
Sure, thank you.
No Fred Flintstone police cruisers?
Not at this point, thanks.
Okay, that's a good thing.
Hey, I would request to move resolution 2023-12.
Here you go, move to adopt?
Move to adopt, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
And Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 days 12 passes. Turn our attention to resolution number 2023 days 13. This is slated for three readings, and it'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. Mr. Apollo, once again, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2023-13, Resolution Authorizing the Filing of an Application for Financial Assistance from the Ohio Department of Transportation State Infrastructure Bank Loan Program, and to Execute and Enter into an Agreement as Required for the Construction of a Roundabout at the Intersection of Oak Hill and Oldman Roads for the City of Worcester, Ohio, and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, as it states in the title, the city's just asking us to give them authorization to go out to the Ohio Department of Transportation that maintains a direct loan program. At this point, the maximum term of the loan would be 20 years. It would be a fixed rate of 3%. The loan is interest-free for the first year, and at this point, the 3% is less expensive than what we're gonna find on a number of current market rates. And so, that's the reason for the request. And with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappick. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Have you factored in with the, with the one year interest-free what our actual interest rate is?
2.9975.
Okay, I knew you'd have that. Thank you very much. That's not bad in this day and age. Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Knappick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
And Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 days 13 passes. We'll now look at resolution number 2023 days 14. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, suspension of the rules, but it does require to have Mrs. Apollo to read the title, if you would please.
Sure. Resolution number 2023-14, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Administration to Advertise According to Law and Enter Into a Contract with the Lowest and Best Bitter for Water Treatment Plant Water Filter Improvements and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, as noted, this is a request to authorize for the advertisement for bids to enter into a contract with the lowest bidder for the rehabilitation of our water filters at the water production facility. The rehabilitation will consist of the removal and replacement of the filter under drains and media, and the design work will be performed by Jones and Henry Engineering, the original designers of our water treatment facility. Of interesting note, and as we saw in the design memorandum from Jones and Henry, our current facility was built with the foundation and piping infrastructure to double its capacity. So, great forward planning on behalf of the city. I didn't have a reference of how long ago that was, but it's probably plus 20 years. So, it's done a very fine job. The interesting thing about this upgrade and media or filtration replacement is it will, and there's some, you know, engineering nomenclature in terms of flow and GPMs and so forth, but in layman's term, this upgrade will expand our capacity by 33%. So, in lieu of expanding brick and mortar with new facilities, we'll have an extended functional useful life at our current facility with this upgrade. So, well done in terms of the cost avoidance with improved operating efficiency, with expanded capacity. And Mike, again, you're gonna be real busy with all of your new projects, this just being a small one compared to the other pieces of legislation that we passed most recently. So, welcome aboard. Continued success. This is a budgeted item. It will be put out for competitive bid. Our city in-house engineering will work with the inspection and in conjunction with the Jones and Henry design. Mike, is there anything you'd like to add in terms of my summation and commentary?
It's a very good summation. I don't know that I can add a whole lot to that. The expansion of the plant from the current rating of six to eight, it's gonna be dependent upon some work after the filters are done, to do some performance testing and things like that. So, provided we can get through all of that, that'll satisfy the UK's requirements and let us get to an AMGD permitted capacity.
So, you may be sandbagging, we might get a 40% improvement.
No, no.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, okay.
We can tie it to eight, they won't let us tie it at the 10.
Okay, yeah, they're pretty good at their calculations, I'm sure. Well, thank you, and with that, I would motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Last chance to give Mr. Fritz his baptism of fire. I mean, Mr. Ansel threw him softballs. We're the kinder, gentler council. I don't know what, who you've appeared before, but we, our bark is worse than our bite, right?
We're just worn out from your earlier.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we, exactly. Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappick?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 days 14 passes. Resolution number 2023 days 15 will be presented by Ms. Knappick. It is a budgeted item. Before I get to you, Ms. Knappick, I'll turn for the second to the last time, and please read the title.
Resolution number 2023-15, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Administration to Advertise According to Law and Enter Into a Contract with the Lowest and Best Bitter for Furnishing Bituminous Material.
Okay, Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Thank you. When I read these two resolutions that I have, I was like, oh, my favorite memories of summer are what it smells like when you mow the grass, and what it smells like when they put asphalt down on streets. So, I just kind of sat back for a minute and felt the sunshine and had those smells, and summer is coming at some point.
Yes, another day closer, that's what I said.
Another day closer, yes. In this first resolution, 2023-15, we are asking for approval to bid for pricing on the purchase of bituminous asphalt products unless the pricing is available either through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program or the Ohio Department of Transportation Purchasing Program. The city is great about going back into those purchasing programs and getting us discounts as much as they can, and I do an excellent job of that. This is in case they are not able to get the pricing, they can go out for bid on this. Last year, the department purchased about $305,000 or 4,100 tons in bituminous asphalt. This year, we have budgeted $510,000, and I'm, which is 6,000 tons, which I was glad to see. That's not just the increase in price. We're doing more roads this summer, and this is budgeted. So, Kurt Denny, would you like to add anything?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you.
How many roads are we actually paving ourselves? Do you know?
How many, how many lane miles are we scheduled?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what engineering has, but we'll have, we'll have about 10 miles, lane miles of roads, about five, five miles of double lane road.
Because I know sometimes we, you know, contract it out or bid it out. But I know in the past that people were always amazed, what a great job our PPM crew does in paving. Most independent paving companies always said they could never match the skill, expertise, and how good a road looked when our crew and how good a road looked when our crew did it. So I'm glad you're carrying on the tradition.
We're doing our best.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
I think I need a motion.
Oh, she forgot.
Yeah, move to adopt.
Yeah, usually, I'm sorry, usually we have a discussion after.
I know, I jumped in there ahead of time. That was my fault. Move to adopt.
You know, I'm still punchy from the public hearing. Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappick?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
And Reynolds?
Yes.
Resolution number 2023 day 15 passes. Our last piece of legislation will be presented by Ms. Knappick. It's resolution number 2023 day 16, and it is also a budgeted item. Would you read the last piece of legislation there, Ms. Apollo?
Resolution number 2023-16, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for mowing services for city-owned property.
Ms. Knappick, bring us home, and those reminiscence of freshly mowed grass.
Absolutely. Too bad we have to walk out into the cold. This is, the city's asking for authorization to advertise for bid for the city property mowing for 2023. The estimated total funds are $100,000. As you indicated, that has already been budgeted. And in the legislation explanation, it does say that the majority of the city-owned property mowing is covered under this contract, so we've got parks, water basins, all our public properties, all those things. And the contract will be bid in four segments. Bidders can choose one, or two, or three, or four, however many segments they choose to bid on. And we're going, the price is a little bit more than 2022. 2022 was $90,000. This year, it's $100,000. And when you figure out how much gas those mowers have to use, that probably is absolutely appropriate. Is there anything else, Mr. Denny?
No.
Thank you. I would move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Knappick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any additional discussion? If not, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Knappick?
Resolution number.
I'm sorry.
I figured you were gonna vote. Resolution, we already had a majority in it.
I didn't hear that.
Resolution number 2023 day 16 passes. Brings us to the miscellaneous portion of the meeting. I don't think anyone signed up for the public comment. That brings us to counsel. So we will start with Mr. Cavan.
Oh, thank you. Nothing to add. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
I thank you. I have nothing to add. Thanks.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Ms. Warden?
I'd just like to thank the hospital board for inviting us and giving us a great presentation this evening prior to this meeting. And I would encourage everybody to investigate all of the different things that the hospital is offering and on the verge of offering. They have some really incredible technologies coming up that they're using, so, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
At the risk of alienating everyone in the room for dragging the subject on just a little bit longer, I wish Mr. Dushal had stuck around, but we've had this conversation before. He was basically making two arguments on this, on Mr. Myers' piece of legislation. One on a fairness basis and the other on a public policy basis. And I think, you know, for me personally, the fairness basis was resonated. I'm not convinced on a public policy basis that, again, the issue I brought up, that more mobile homes is the answer to our housing situation. We're very interested to see how this plays out going forward. So, you know, I think we all reserve the rights to change our mind, depending on how things play out. But as things currently stand, I would not be in favor of either further expansion of this, of the existing mobile home parks we have, or additional mobile home parks in addition to the two we already have. That's it.
All right, and it's only fitting you had the last piece of legislation. We'll give you the last word, Ms. Knappick.
Thank you. I have three very quick things. First of all, I would like to welcome Mike to Worcester City, great administration. I'm sure you'll do great here, and we're always this much fun at council. Second, I would like to welcome, we swore in, how many new police officers? Four?
There were four, there should have been five. He said, why would you send a baby?
Oh, get it passed then. It's all right. Well, I would like to welcome them on board and thank them for their services. And third, I would like to congratulate the Walnut Street Gallery, which is a business here in Worcester. They received the Governor's Award, which is very, very prestigious. Received the Governor's Award for Business Support of the Arts. So I would like to congratulate them for winning that Governor's Award. And that's all for me. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Ansel.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
To adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye or adjourn.